2018. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I want to take a motion to approve the minutes of May 8, 2018.
A move that we approve the minutes of May 8, 2018, as written.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment on that is not on the agenda. Hearing none. We're going to accommodate Mr. Fernandez and takes up a little lot of order in the time we have. And that would be a grant of location requested by National Grid to install and maintain approximately 270. We'll do the reserve fund transfer as well. Of two-inch gas main in Harborview Drive. Ms. Keller.
Aye.
How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
So what are we looking to do?
We are looking to extend the main on Harborview to accommodate a house 217 feet of two-inch on Harborview from the existing two-inch gas main at 45 westally to the end of main near house number 49.
Do you think I can extend it to the cul-de-sac?
It is a cul-de-sac, yes.
Okay. All right. Questions, counsel?
When do you anticipate undertaking the work?
Immediately. I think as soon as we get the permission.
Okay. And how long do you think the project will take? Do you have any sense, Barbara?
A week, maybe.
A week? Okay. No further questions?
Audience, none. I want to take a motion to request, to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 217 feet of two-inch gas main in Harborview Drive. This gas main will originate from the existing two-inch main at number 45 and continue under the paved surface of Harborview Drive to completion at number 49. The purpose of this gas main will be to provide gas service to number 49 Harborview Drive. This approval is subject to the stipulation the Department of Public Works has outlined in the letter dated April 24, 2018.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Barbara.
All right. And next item while we have you here, Roger.
The reserve fund transfer request?
Yes, I'm looking for it. Tom, why don't you take us through that?
Sure. So with the weather we've had back on the March 2nd storm, there was significant damage done to the bathing beach area. I'll let Roger walk you through the work that needs to be done, but some sand work on the beach itself and then some grass replacement of eroded areas up by the POW Park.
Okay.
Chairman, thank you. Good evening. So actually we have, as Mr. Mayo stated, we have a grant, I'm sorry, a reserve fund transfer request for the bathing beach, acting on behalf of the trustees of the bathing beach. The request is for $51,000. The work itself, as Mr. Mayo indicated, is to re-nourish, replenish the beach with sand. This is something that takes, comes up from time to time. On average, three to five years, we will encounter a storm that will scarp and cause the sand to wash away from the beach. And that's what happened in March. So this funding will pay for the material and labor associated with re-nourishing the beach with the necessary sand to bring it to what we're accustomed to seeing in the past. Originally, this had been one reserve fund transfer request. We've broken this up, the second, so the one for $51,000 applies to the trustees of the bathing beach. The second is a request for $25,000. The intent of that money is to be applied to the Whitney Wharf slash Veteran Park location along Prairie. Some of you have had a chance to look at that, and that location sustained some damage as well as resulting from storms. The extraordinary high tides resulted in water infiltrating between the stone that resulted in undermining of some of the materials that are there. It's actually not safe. The hope is that these funds will be applied to repairing those locations and putting something in place that we hope will present some resiliency in the future. So the, in terms of what that might look like, it would be, we would try to carve out those bad locations, excavate those, install a filter fabric, backfill that with stone so that hopefully in the future, if water were to get behind the wall, it wouldn't wash out those fines that caused that undermining, that material that causes that undermining. So the $25,000, we hope is going to be enough. The only caveat we say is that a lot of the work is going to be behind and underground. So we're sort of hoping that it's not going to be extensive, but like anything else, it's tough to see what's there without actually.
To open it up.
Yeah. The beach on the other case, it's a little easier. Obviously, we can quantify that, but this is a little more difficult. So we'll hope, maybe, you know, we always, we always try to do it for less if possible, of course, without saying, but in this case, we're flying blind a little bit.
The only thing I would add is that this is coming before you today in an effort to get the work done in time for the July 4th celebration down the harbor.
Sure. And as of right now, it's really not safe to be down there. Okay.
So the sand, you're saying, this re-nourishment project, this is something that we undertake periodically? And in this case, do you have some sense of when the last time was that we?
I think, I think it was about three to two, three years ago. Yeah, around three years ago.
Okay. And it was, it's a combination of time plus the catastrophic storms this winter that have caused that?
If you have a mild winter, then we, you know, it's not necessary to the extent that we don't even need to really bring any significant machinery out there. What the DPW does, they excavate some of the sand that migrates towards the boat ramp.
Right, right, right.
Reuse that material. So we really do need a storm or a series of storms that result in the sand washing away.
Okay. And, you know, I'd agree with Paul. I think the Whitney Wharf repairs are sorely needed. I guess the, maybe the change you're making then is to include that filtration fabric so that the finer materials can't then pass out underneath the stonework that's there.
Correct. That's the whole, yeah.
Okay. I'm good.
Just, if you don't mind, I just want to interject. I talked to Selectman Power earlier today, and she wanted me to mention that she had walked the beach with Roger and had seen the area, agreed that the beach work needed to be done. She felt that the beach would be, would be far less used if this work isn't done this summer. And also that, that it was just, she, in general, she felt that it was important that this, wanted me to let you know.
Questions from the audience? Hearing none. I want to take a motion to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the paving supplies account in the amount of $25,000.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the trustees of the bathing beach repair and maintenance grounds account in the amount of $51,000.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. Okay. And at this time, we are going to have a public hearing on the application for a change of location of a package store, all alcoholic beverages licensed from RMP LLC DBA Douglas Wine and Spirits, 211 Lincoln Street, to MJH, Inc., DBA, Main Street Market in Delhi, 484 Main Street. Is there anybody here for the deli? Well, ladies and gentlemen, this particular application has generated a fair amount of interest. And if you're here for that, welcome. You'll have an opportunity to speak, but the way this will go is this. We'll hear from the applicant. We'll have questions of our own, and then we'll open it up to the public. And those that wish to speak may do so. You ask to be recognized, I'll recognize you. You go to the podium by name and address and address any questions or comments to the board, and we'll take it from there. All right? So ladies, sir, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Phil Markella. I'm working with MJH, Inc. in far as processing this application for the transfer of the liquor license and now this change of location hearing. As the board knows, we were here January 2nd, I believe it was January 2nd, for the transfer application hearing. That was opened and closed and approved. So the actual transfer of the license, barring anything that we haven't been made aware of, has been complete. Now through some technical logistics, we're back again to transfer the, to give the location approved. Much of the discussion that would be taking place tonight is somewhat redundant because we spoke about this and addressed these issues that I'm assuming are going to come up tonight at our public hearing on January 2nd. So my question to the board is, how much, are we going to have a redundant conversation regarding the location? Are we going to, I mean, because we already had an open hearing and this, and the location of the business was discussed and approved. So I'm looking for guidance as to how much of this is going to be rehashed? How much of a second bite of the apple are people going to have when we already had a public hearing? I'm, with all due respect.
I mean, so I guess, you know, what I understood was that the paperwork was incorrectly filed so that the butters weren't notified. So for a change of location application, I think you got to notify the neighbors, and neighbors weren't notified. So with all due respect, sir, you know, I think second bite of the apple is a, is a what you're saying.
No, and that's why, I understand that.
So I guess if I were you, I'd be prepared to have a fulsome discussion on this tonight.
I missed it.
I'd echo that comment, and frankly, I think you're starting off on the right foot.
I was going to say.
I'm giving it to you straight on. Just present what you want to do. We didn't have the benefit of input from those that were entitled to have input. So for all practical purposes, we're doing this again. Okay? Clear?
Clear.
Good. You may proceed.
Well, these are the owners of MJH Incorporated. As the folks know who are here in the audience, the Hood family has pretty much been running this store for three years now. It's a convenience store. It's been a convenience store in this neighborhood for as long as it probably anyone in this audience can remember. And it's going to maintain its identity as a convenience store. Commuters who use that store in the morning to get a cup of coffee and a paper are still going to be able to get a cup of coffee and a paper tomorrow morning. People who work in town, who go to this store to get sandwiches and chips and soda at lunchtime are still going to be able to go to this store to get sandwiches and chips and soda at lunchtime. Parents who bring their children to ballgames around the corner and stop there to get their chewing gum and candy and sports drinks are still going to be able to stop there and get their candy, chewing gum, and sports drinks. People who are those same commuters who come by in the morning for coffee, swing by in the afternoon and the evenings on their way home, excuse me, and get a gallon of milk or a six-pack of beer or a bottle of wine are now hopefully going to have the option of getting a bottle of liquor as well. It's a convenience store, and this change is being made in order to keep up with the times, in order to keep up with the demand that has been shown to the owners of the store, to provide an extra convenience to their existing clientele. This is not a move to turn this into a liquor store. That's never, at least it's never been made apparent to me that that is the goal. The goal is to add convenience to their existing customers. Are there going to be people who aren't existing customers who come by? Maybe. Hopefully, that'll be, that would be a good thing. But this is not a substantial change in operation. This is simply adding an extra convenience, which is what a convenience store is supposed to do. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to say that Connor and Andrew and myself have put a lot into this business. We've adopted Hingham, and we care about our customers a lot. And I think that shows in our business. And as Phil said, it's an added convenience. Does it add to our revenue? I hope so, but I just am concerned that there has been a wave of misinformation, that we are no longer going to do what we do best and be a family neighborhood store.
Well, that's why we're here tonight now. We want to find out the facts with a little more detail and give people an opportunity to speak.
Right. But I do, I guess what I want to impress upon you is how important that is to us as a family and as a business.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you'd like to add before we ask a few questions?
If you have anything to say?
It's just the same thing that you said, basically. I mean, when Jay and I had it, and we always donated to, you know, schools, sports, the police, the fire. We held multiple fundraisers for the church up the street.
Yeah, we do that, too.
We've never thought of ourselves as just a business and a community, but actually part of the community. So I wouldn't want to negatively impact the community at all. I don't want to negatively impact the kids, you know? Like, they've just said, we just want to add a convenience to what's there.
Can you talk a little bit about the petition that folks signed? Do you know, one of the, one of the?
Basically, all the reasons on there really don't apply because we're not changing to a liquor store.
No, no. Didn't you, didn't you submit some names to us?
Oh, yes, we did.
Yeah, that's the one I was asking.
Yeah, I think there's over 200 signatures there.
Oh, yeah.
And those are our customers. And it was just a handwritten thing that I did, asking for support. And the response was far better than I thought it would be, and it really made me feel good. And they didn't just sign, you know, they talked to us when they signed and the reasons why. And it just, it really just gave us, I don't know what the word is, but it made us feel really good that we were doing the right thing and that we were staying and adding to the community. We weren't taking away from it.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that is I think one of the statutes that talks about licensing, liquor licenses, talks about sort of public need and appropriate location and that sort of thing. And so, you know, I know that, as you suggested, there's other folks who are concerned and oppose the location, but I think they're, the folks on your list are sort of suggesting to me that, hey, maybe this, as you, as you're pointing out, maybe this is an added convenience that people actually want. And so I think that that petition is helpful in that regard.
Great, thank you.
I have some questions in terms of what's being displaced by what you propose to put into this store.
We actually just condensed some of the things there. Instead of having like 12 feet of candy, we have like six feet of candy.
Right.
It's not like we took anything away that was there. I think the only thing we took out was cleaning products.
And we still have it.
But we have like paper towels and toilet paper.
Right.
But it was just condensing some of what was there. It wasn't taking away from anything because we don't want to take away from the community, you know? We just want to.
I mean, the items, the few items that we took away, we didn't sell anyways.
You know, I guess some of the concern was the few times I stopped in and the, you know, after the hearing and before this hearing, maybe is when you were sort of reconfiguring the store because the shelves were pretty barren. And, you know, the, the sort of reaction to that is, oh, is all this now going to turn into alcohol, which is, you know, kind of shocking. So, you know, I, again, I appreciate you coming here and talking about how the store would be configured, and you provided us with a drawing of how it would be configured. But like I said, when I, when I stopped in there, there was virtually nothing on the shelves, so.
Right. Well, we, probably when you did was a month or two ago, and we thought that it was going to happen at that point in time, so we were getting ready for it. So that's why.
Can you, can you quantify in terms of percentages, what percent of the store, the interior is dedicated to the sale of beer and wine presently?
What would you say?
What do you think?
Oh, you know?
I don't know. I don't know numbers. I'm just looking at the floor plan.
Maybe.
Is this the handwritten sketch?
Yeah.
Okay.
It may not even be, I know.
That's over 30%.
Yeah.
And what would be the percentage of the interior store offering?
Hard alcohol?
Which would be then dedicated where this license to be approved?
We have one gondola that is, I don't know, maybe six feet long, that has three shelves. There were two additional, but that's storage, that's overstocked. So for sellable shelves, there are about six shelves, six feet long, that will be alcohol.
Would you, I think it says liquor there, is that what?
Yeah.
Layout and?
Oh, yeah, there it is. That's right. Yep. Mm-hmm. Can you see it right here?
I think so. You've got domestic beer and looks like three shelves of liquor.
Right.
And the rest is?
Well, the main, the main one is wine, and it's the exact same footage as we had previously. We just relocated it.
And what's in the, as I look at it, red wine, and then what's in that top left corner? What does that say?
Oh, ice cream.
Ice cream, okay. So what was, where the liquor is now, what was there?
That was where the wine.
Wine. So what we did is we brought the, we reduced?
The candy.
Like 15 feet of chips and 15 feet of candy. That would be that one gondola that says red wine now?
Yep.
Okay. What we did is we brought those down to like half, relocated them, then we took the wine where it says liquor, brought it up into this front line. So it's all still there. It's just that we, I mean, there really was no need to have 15 different kinds of Reese's. It was crazy.
Okay.
I guess the other question I'll ask is operator history because that's another sort of checklist item for the ABCC, I know, and that would be another reason why, you know, we may or may not extend your license to include spirits as well as malt beverage and wine. So how's your operator history been in that location in terms of, you know, serving alcohol minors?
What have we got there?
Well, we actually just put the liquor POS in, too. We updated the software at the liquor POS to safeguard against it.
Okay.
So is that, when you say that, the point of sale requires an entry of a birthday, right?
Correct. Or you scan the license.
Okay.
A Massachusetts state license.
Okay. Okay.
Just to clarify, Selectman Johnson, I had looked into this, I had spoken with, well, had my office speak with the chief's office, and I believe that there was one record over the last, since they started operating this back in, whatever, '73 or so, that had, that they had been cited for serving minors.
Alcohol minors. Okay.
In terms of the delivery schedule that would accompany the sale of hard liquor, can you give us a sense of what the delivery schedule would be?
That would be, my son Connor, you'd have to answer that.
Can I talk?
Yeah.
Sure. Sure.
So a lot of the companies?
Could you just identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry, Connor, everyone. Connor Hood, that's my mother right here. How you doing, everybody? So a lot of the companies we would be dealing with, or we are dealing with currently, they just have their own division of liquor. So it wouldn't increase the truck traffic, it would just maybe increase the inventory of a delivery. So it would be the same hours. We typically try to keep it after 3:00, just for our, our business as well, because our busy, you know, doing deli sandwiches, things like that gets interrupted. We don't have obviously much parking space, so we try to instruct delivery drivers to deliver after 3:00. Sometimes it doesn't happen because if they're in the area, they'll stop in, but we try to talk to them about the, about that. So they'll remain similar.
So what you're saying is that the delivery schedule wouldn't change in a substantive way, it just would expand what's being brought to you by the existing deliveries?
Exactly.
And what are your operating hours currently?
From 7 to, God help me, 10. On like Fridays, Saturdays. Monday through Thursday, it's from 7 to 9, and on Sundays, it's from 8 to 8.
Okay. And I'm not familiar with this, but can, you can sell alcohol at 7:00 in the morning?
No, no, no.
About 8:00. Our license is at 8:00.
8:00 AM.
That's Monday through Saturday. And then Sunday is, it used to be 12, but recently the law changed to 10:00 to 10:00. If that's how the license, we close at 8, but that's how the license is, I believe, initiated.
Okay. So alcohol sales can start as early as 8?
As 8 on.
And, and on close, and end at closing?
Yes, I think it could be up to 11:00, but we don't say.
But your hours?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. I mean, just so I don't forget this.
Sure.
My understanding is that with a new license, you, you could have different hours, and I, I wouldn't want that to happen. I wouldn't want any expansion of your hours with the transfer of this license.
Right.
That's completely understandable. Yep. Absolutely.
Okay.
And then the other issue is, and I haven't seen it there, and I'm assuming you wouldn't change this either, but in terms of advertising for alcohol, you don't have anything currently in the window?
No.
Okay. And?
We don't want that look either, to be honest with you.
Okay.
It doesn't really help sales, especially with our clientele and our people. You know, we want to remain it as like a country store that is. It doesn't, wouldn't benefit us to do that, so we like to keep it the way it is. I think the old country-style store look actually does us some good, so we want to keep it that way.
Well, I will say, I've always appreciated the flowers up front.
Thank you.
Look at me, that's.
That's what you, Connor?
Surprising.
Excuse me? I didn't hear what you said. I'm sorry. If you have signage on advertising on any alcoholic beverages?
Excuse me? If you wish to be recognized?
I'm just trying to hear.
Okay. Yep. You just raise the hand, I'll recognize you, but this gentleman's speaking right now. He was talking about signage, ma'am.
Right.
And if I'm not mistaken, he's indicated that the signage isn't going to change in a substantive way as a result of anything. Can you hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
But I also want to speak on that.
You'll have that opportunity momentarily. Yes. Anything else you'd like to add?
I think I'm all set.
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I just want to add one last thing, if that's, if you don't mind.
You know what? Maybe try to speak, like, I know that mic's low for you.
It's too tall.
But, yeah, I know.
Can you pick it up?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I just want to get a point across that when this liquor license opportunity came out, you know, the times are changing. We realized we really couldn't make a living selling Campbell's Soup all day, little cans of Campbell's Soup. No one really, hate to say it, shops at small little convenience stores anymore. I mean, if you look at even the Tedeskies up at West Corner and by the train station, they've completely closed down now. So we get on this liquor license, it's just, for me, it's a way to survive and a way to adapt and to market that I can hopefully make some more revenue on, you know, between me and my mom and everyone involved. It's just, we're not doing it to make the store a, you know, a trash pit that, you know, let liquor stores get that bad rap of, I understand that. It's just really, it's a great business opportunity for me and my family and, you know, just trying to survive in these tough times, to be honest with you guys. So, so I'll leave that on note. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody like to speak? I'm going to go ladies first. Yes, ma'am. If you could just go to the podium, if you would.
I have a couple of handicaps, one of walking, one of zero.
Take your time.
Both age-related.
Would you identify yourself for the record, please, ma'am?
Freedom Millie, 486 C Main Street. I would like to know what percentage of this store is going to be alcohol-related, beer, wine, and hard liquor? What percentage of the square footage?
Do you want to show that?
Well, why don't you, why don't you describe in words so that the audience at home can get a clear understanding? Why don't you say what you believe is the existing percentage of your operation and what the new percentage would be were this permit to be issued?
We're considering this as a family convenience.
It is.
With chips and hot dogs and?
If you would be so kind as to address your comments to the chair, ma'am.
Yes, I'll.
Thank you.
I would say it's going to be more than thirty-five percent.
Yeah.
Thirty-five to forty percent.
All right. So on this, this rough, this rough draft here, we, sorry, just blew up my eardrums. In this rough draft here, we, we sent over about, I'd say about a month ago, I'd say roughly about forty-five percent of the store, anywhere from, I'd say thirty-five to forty-five percent of the store.
Yeah, thirty-five.
Forty-five is maybe more. I'm just, I'm just, it's a rough estimate. It's kind of tough to.
Slow it down. What are you saying?
Sure. I'm sorry. I say.
Fifty percent, twenty-five percent?
I'm saying about, about thirty percent.
Excuse me?
About thirty to thirty-five percent.
Is going to be alcohol-related?
That is correct.
What is it now?
It's probably about twenty-five percent, twenty percent.
You're only going up five percent?
About fifteen percent.
Maybe, maybe fifteen. I, I can't give you an exact percentage, unfortunately. I'm just, this is my estimate.
Will we able, will you be able to hold you to that promise?
Absolutely.
That's our plan.
Absolutely.
You're not held to any other promise that has been made over the years, so I'm just curious.
Well, it's important that we focus on the issues before us tonight, Mrs. Millie.
Okay. Second question.
And please address it to the board.
What?
Please address your questions to the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Signed bylaws. Who enforces them and what's the penalty for breaking them?
The building inspector would speak to that issue, and as I understand what the applicant has said, they don't plan to have any changes in the signage, the exterior signage. Is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
But right now, you have beer and wine sign.
That, that is correct.
And that is against the signed bylaw?
Okay. Are you talking about the Main Street Market in deli sign up top?
Groceries, wine, and beer.
Yeah, it's been that way forever.
And it was promised in nineteen seventy-three that they would never know that beer and wine was sold in there until you went in. That was in nineteen seventy-three.
But as I?
I have never heard of any kind of rescinding of that bylaw.
As I understand it, these people came into this business several years ago, and we're talking about something that goes back forty years. So your, your point to whatever the bylaw spoke to then is not what we're dealing with now. We're just deciding whether or not to grant a full liquor license as opposed to keeping it a beer and wine.
Excuse me, Mr. Healy, but this all has to do with the granting of this license. If they're going to have breaking rules that have already been there and have been abided by, by a number of owners in the past years, and now they're advertising beer and wine on a sign outside the building.
Was the sign up when you moved in?
Yes, it was. Yes, it was.
Do you have another question, ma'am?
I guess that's about it.
Is there anything else you'd like to say before you sit down?
I'm not in favor of this.
I sensed that.
And the parking problem is a problem. I have complained quite often to the police department that there should, and the building inspector, that there should be a rule in town that delivery trucks have to be smaller than the building they deliver to. Eighteen-wheelers come in there, have been for a number of years, delivering cases of beer, wine, soda pop, whatever. It is a traffic hazard. We've had a couple of deaths in front of that store.
Yes. Anything else?
Pedestrian, a car accident. I've had accidents with some caregivers that come up and take care of my husband, trying to get out. We are blocked most of the time. I've had to move delivery trucks out of my yard years ago because they were stuck in mud and didn't know how to drive them. The other thing is the lunches. They eat lunch on the property. There's benches in front to allow them to do that. It has become a zoo for any of the neighbors that have to come in and out of that right of way. The benches in front are nice and cute and all of that, and the kids sit there and drink their pop and whatever.
Children like it, do they?
But so do people eat their lunch. And we've had, I've had people sit in our park, in our driveway, in our front yard, eating their lunch. A UPS driver. I went out and asked him what, you know, did he have a package for us? No, he was having his lunch.
Okay, ma'am. I think I've got the picture.
Are you getting the picture? I've had?
Getting the picture, you're crazy.
Lawn, lawn people drive up with their trucks and their trailers and try to turn around. I've had one that I called the police on a number of years ago, a big truck. I went out and stood in front of him, say, "Why are you here?" He said, "I'm turning around." I said, "No, you're not. You're waiting for the police." And he threatened to drive over me.
All right, Mrs. Millie, I think you've made your point very clear. I'd like to open this up so other neighbors?
Now, this is, the cold hard facts about this convenience store is turning into a zoo. It used to be, when Mr. Clay owned it, a convenience store. You picked up meat, bread, and milk. A newspaper.
Did you live there when Mr. Lynch owned the store?
Nineteen sixties, I moved there.
So you're familiar with the operation of Jack's Country Store as well, then, correct? Yes. You're familiar with Jack's?
I knew Jack Lynch, yes. He was the one that promised that there would be no signs ever outside that said anything about beer or wine. They went back on it. There was a Schlitz sign in the window. We had a hearing on it, and Mr. Jack Studley was the one said there's a zoning sign bylaw that prohibits it. It was removed.
Thank you, Mrs. Millie.
You're welcome.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
Greg Sullivan, twenty-five Talbot Road. Thank you for listening. I'm just here in, in support of the owners, Connor and Andrew in particular. I've grown to know them over the last three years, and if they say they're going to do something, they'll do it. They care about the neighborhood, the community in general, and if, I trust their integrity, if they say they're going to do something, they will do it. So I, I hope you grant their petition.
Okay. Thank you very much. Yes, sir, in the back.
Thank you very much. Bob Harrington, sixty-seven Cross Street, which is about a couple blocks away.
I know where it is.
I can just tell you from my own experience, I have been to the store to buy Campbell's Soup. I was hoping was doing better than that, because I get it there all the time.
That's your dinner.
Bread, milk, paper towels, ketchup, mustard, all, you know, last minute if I'm having a family party or whatever. I've known Andrew and Connor the whole time they've owned the store. They've been perfect gentlemen. Every time I've been to the store, the only people I ever see hanging out in front of the store are youth soccer and Little League players eating ice cream, whether that's, you know, at eight o'clock at night or eight o'clock in the morning. And I, both these young men are trying to make a life. They've, they've both educated themselves, and instead of leaving the town and going someplace else to try and become entrepreneurs, they've decided to stay in the town, make it better. They're involved. I know Andrew lives right around the corner, so this is not something that I think would be a harmful impact on the community, and I hope very much that you grant their petition. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Gail Crennay, and I'm a resident of Hingham, but more importantly, I'm a direct butter to the store. And I just want to make it perfectly clear that we are not, it's not against him or her or, we're not on any side. I'm, I just want to bring up the points that the Hingham residents should know and be aware of, because it's really important if this gets into the wrong hands, to know that we can't reverse this. This isn't something you can reverse. We can't take it back once it's done. And I can't stress enough the importance of stopping this license from being approved and only, you know, not, they're not already abiding by the zoning laws, because these laws were set in nineteen thirty. The zoning somehow passed a liquor license in nineteen seventy-three unbeknownst to anybody. So that liquor license shouldn't have even been approved back then. Number two, I'm a concerned citizen of the town of Hingham, and I want to preserve the town for the reasons I chose to live here. And a place where I wanted to be where my kids were growing up, the schools are good and that type of thing. But three, I definitely do not want to add a license to sell more liquor than they already do for the following reasons. And to your point, when I go in the store, it's at least fifty percent of alcohol, and it goes to the top of the ceiling. So it's not twenty-five percent as when I first moved here in nineteen eighty-nine, ninety-nine, somewhere around there. I, it was boasting of twenty-three flavors of ice cream, and there was a little bit of wine in the back. And I really don't know and care about what preserves the right to keep a liquor store, but, or, I mean, to keep a convenience store, but Seven-Eleven does fine. They don't sell, they don't sell that much of anything except for like trinkets and toys and, you know, stuff the kids should use. And, God, I'm so thirsty right now. Can I?
Would you like some water?
Yeah.
Okay. Can help you with that.
The reasons why I don't want it to pass is, number one, is zoning laws, because of the zoning laws in nineteen thirty. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I did a lot of research. The property values, if you Google property values, what increases and decreases the property values in Hingham? Number one on the list, good to live by, is highly rated elementary schools. Number two on the list is parks. Number three is convenience stores. But for those times you run out of flour on the way through and baking and want to grab a, grab a quick Coke to go with dinner, or need a six-pack to share with your friends while watching the game, living by a grocery store is a great convenience. And it is a great convenience, and that's why I chose to live there. But, but what are the devaluing properties things? The number one is industrial areas because of smell, noise, pollution. But number two is adult-oriented businesses, strip clubs, liquor stores, smoke shops, tattoo parlors, and other businesses that cater solely to adult vices, that stigma for being bad neighbors and for very good reason. While upstanding owners may run the businesses, these types of businesses usually bring drunk customers, drug use, and less-than-savvy visitors during odd hours. And this is not in disrespect to you and what you've done. The store looks very nice on the outside, and it looks clean on the inside. And this isn't out of disrespect for you at all. It's what if it gets into the wrong hands? That is my main concern, because you care. They're not going to. They're not going to be a resident of Hingham. They're not going to care. And from my understanding, I heard that you guys sold your house. So.
Let's, let's focus on the issue before us, please.
All right. Sorry. Not to get off topic. Okay.
Just, just please. Yes, ma'am. You can continue.
So the property values, and then the store was intended from, I went to the Historical Society, and there's no mention of alcohol anywhere. From nineteen eighty-nine, it was a grocery store. Keep changing hands in a grocery store contents. In nineteen oh-one, it was garden seeds, every description seeds, potatoes, specialty. And then there was an ad for, believe it or not, being, before you buy your garden seeds, find stock of reliable seeds going at bottom prices, peas at wholesale prices. But there's never any mention of alcohol. And in the whole time, then, even in nineteen oh-four, stock of shoes, rubber goods, overalls, and small, small wares, whatever. But the other point that I want to make is there's too many liquor stores in Hingham already. Three closed already. Douglas closed ten months ago and Planet Fitness Shopping Center. Ralph's went out of business next to Atlantic Bagel, and Trader Joe's had the option to buy the license and opt it out. Fresh Market, I went to go visit and talk to all the, the owners of that or who manages that store and, in the shipyard. And the guy says that the constitute of liquor's sales is ten percent of sales, wine being number one, beer number two, and liquor three, which maybe approximates to about two percent of their sales. Hennessy's was a market deli that turned beer and wine, and now it's a full-blown liquor store. I don't want to live next to a liquor store. I'm sorry. I just don't. But, but we, but, but is it really good for the, for Hingham residents in a, in a residentially zoned area? Hingham's allowed a number of licenses according to the population of the number of people living in Hingham. This includes all people, even children, who are not even of age, perhaps just being born, and clearly not to legally be able to drink. Increased noise and safety hazards are also an issue. Bottles breaking, glass chips might be left. That's only because of the more, the number of bottles and deliveries. And to Millie's point, who, what percentage, what percentage can we make them to hear, adhere to in the, in the standards of how much they can buy and hold and occupy in the store? There's no law on the planet that will make them and enforce them to hold X amount of contents in a certain percentage. And what else? And I've heard in the past that police logs of this store, before I even came here, were numerous and out of control. I don't know, I haven't noticed any of that in all fairness to you guys since I've, since you guys have owned it. So I'm not against them owning it. I just haven't, and they've done a really good job. It's just the next generation. And last but not least, I'm just asking people to vote against it passing tonight, because it's just not in the best interest of the, not just me, but in the town. That's about it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ken Kilduff. I've lived on Fairview Street for about five years. My kids, who are ages six and four, love going to the Red Store to get treats and sandwiches and popsicles and things like that. However, I do think the Board of Selectmen must base this crucial decision on a consideration of the public need, protection of the common good, and providing an adequate number of places that sell liquor. In Ballerin Incorporated versus the Licensing Board of Boston, the Massachusetts Appeals Court explained further, "Need, in a rather literal sense of the requirement, is not what the statute is about. Rather, the test includes an assessment of public want and the appropriateness of a liquor store at a particular location. For example, one might hesitate to authorize a license for a bar across the street from a public school. Consideration of the number of existing dispensaries in a locality is a proper concern, as are the views of the inhabitants of the locality in which a license is sought. In making its discretionary determination, a licensing authority may take into account a wide range of factors, such as traffic, noise, size, and the sort of operation that carries a license. I've never heard any complaints or requests from anyone in the area lamenting the fact that there are too few stores selling hard alcohol in the area. Is there a need for a liquor store in a residential area? I don't think so. If you look at every other liquor store in the area, they were all in commercial areas. Hingham Liquors, Brady's. store in the area, they were all in commercial areas. Hingham Liquors, Brady's, Queen Anne Wine and Spirits, Stop &amp; Shop, Cappy's, Macy's, Beachway, all commercial, not even close to a residential area. On Fairview Street, Linskit, Colby, and Leonard, there are 20 kids under the age of eight in that neighborhood alone. Plus, there are about 12 middle, high school kids in the same neighborhood. And that does not count Marshall, Merrymont, and the area of Main Street near the store. In other words, there are children everywhere. And all you need is one child walking or on their bike and one person who can't wait until they get home to have their drink and you have an accident or even worse. One thinks of the recent transformation of the Cracker Barrel, the only other similarly situated store which caters to families seeking ice cream, coffee, fruits, vegetables, or the morning paper. Furthermore, think of this stretch of Main Street. As you're all likely aware, Eleanor Roosevelt once called Main Street "the most beautiful street in America." Isn't that more in keeping with the character of what the Board should be seeking to preserve and promote for this most beautiful street in America, not a store selling bottles and nips of whiskey, vodka, and tequila? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Larry Mayo from 87 Free Street in Hingham. I also am an attorney locally. I have a client here named Gary Gorsiga. I penned a letter to the Board a couple of weeks ago.
Sir, we acknowledge your speech.
I'm here speaking in my personal capacity. From strictly a legal standpoint, I think the letter says a lot. So I hope you had the opportunity to take a look at it and understand it. Just touching upon the previous two speakers' dissertations, both of which I found to be very poignant and invalid, I'd just like to say that, again, we have to keep in mind here that this market is located in a residential district A. You know, it enjoys pre-existing non-conforming use status under the bylaw. The license that you're looking at now can't be viewed as sort of piggybacking on the beer and wine license that they may already have. This is a whole new license. This is a whole new product line that they're looking to institute. So, like I say, in my view, the Zoning Board of Appeals would have to weigh in on this and make a determination as to whether the grant by this Board of a full liquor license would constitute a change in use or a substantial extension of a pre-existing use. And my thought on it would be, it certainly would be. Again, the liquor, the beer and wine license that the store has right now is completely separate and distinct from both a licensing standpoint and the viewpoint of the law on the matter. In other words, the legislature has weighed in previously, the courts have weighed in that beer and wine and liquor licensing are two separate and distinct things. So, again, the simple fact that the store, the location, was granted a license 30 or 40 years ago to sell beer and wine doesn't count right now. You have to look at this thing from a, at this situation from a fresh, fresh perspective. Going to the liquor licensing statute, again, you touched upon it earlier, Ms. Johnson, that the licensing statute speaks in terms of serving the public need and protecting the common good in consideration of transferring a license. The need test is two parts. Okay, there's the want test, right? What are the, what do the people in the community want? You know, some are arguing for it, some are arguing against it. From my perspective, the more important aspect of the test is certainly the appropriateness aspect. And, you know, ultimately, the question is, is this an appropriate location for the transfer of a full liquor license? And I think, in my view anyway, unquestionably, it is not. Again, the property is, you're talking about transferring a license from a 24,000 square foot store on Lincoln Street, a commercial area fronted by a four-lane highway, to a 900 square foot store located on a windy, I guess quasi-public highway. The location over on Lincoln Street had a 50,000 square foot parking lot for the customers to roll in and out of. It had well over a couple of hundred feet of frontage. Here, we're talking about a location with not more than 40 feet of frontage and a lot that's about 5,000 square feet. It just, it doesn't make any sense from a practical standpoint. It certainly doesn't make any sense from a zoning standpoint. Again, in my view, because the transfer of this full liquor license would be a substantial extension, if not an ultimate change in use, the Board doesn't have the authority, if you will, or the basis, may have the authority, not necessarily the basis, to do this unilaterally. And I don't think the Zoning Board of Appeals would disagree with my opinion. I don't represent the Board of Appeals. I'm just, again, indicating what my personal and professional insightfulness lends. Again, clearly, this would be a violation of the zoning bylaw. The zoning bylaws are put in place to ultimately freeze out stores that are pre-existing non-conforming uses. If the store isn't making it, you know, that's part of the reason, you know, the zoning bylaw isn't effect, to freeze it out and, you know, move it off, move it off to a more appropriate location. As far as the equities go, I mean, the people in the community have investments in their homes in the hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. I don't know whether this transaction has closed yet or not, but if that's part of the thought process that might be in the, in the minds of the Board of Selectmen, I would suggest that the equities, number one, favor the homeowners in the community and that, number two, the applicants have wandered into this thing, you know, sort of on a wing and a prayer or being naive to the fact that this is a substantial change in use and their location doesn't warrant or allow for the change.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. You're welcome. And you're speaking in your individual capacity?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Gary Gorsiga. I live at 486C Main Street and I'd like to start out by giving you all these handouts and even labeled them.
Thank you.
Mr. Healy, Ms. Johnson.
His name will be spelled right.
Looking at page one, you will see the Main Street Market and Deli, which is 484 Main Street, and its abutting properties, as well as the shared right-of-way. The four properties that share the right-of-way are 486A, 486B, 486C, and 484 Main Street. It also serves store patrons for parking in the rear, as well as delivery trucks, as the loading dock is on the side of the store facing the lane. The only property that does not rely on a lane for egress is 486 Main Street, which is the house right on Main, but it exercises the right to use it at any point in time it so chooses. Now, please turn to page two and you will get a magnified look at the same image. Page three is a relief of the same image, but with dotted property lines. Please find 480 Main Street and its shared property line with 486C, which is our house. From a zoning standpoint, by law, 486C is a party of interest and considered an abutter since it is within 300 feet of the store and abuts an adjoining property. In the past 55 years, the store has had seven separate owners. If you include the present three-person business partnership, that number increases to nine. Conservatively, this equates to ownership of the store changing hands an average of every seven or eight years. If you would like, I can furnish all the names of the seven owners between 1963 to the present. Would you, would you like those now?
I think we have that information.
Okay.
Thank you.
Regardless of the math, we know one thing. It is not a question of if the store changes ownership, but of when this store will change ownership. Therefore, a promise by current ownership of the store's intent with regards to liquor and its uses cannot be assumed to be followed by future ownership or policed by the town and its neighborhood. Currently, the Main Street Market and Deli has a license to sell beer and wine only. Regardless of today's outcome, they will continue to be permitted to sell beer and wine. A full liquor license, in my understanding, would give the town of Hingham only $700 more per year in tax revenue than it currently collects for the beer and wine license. This new license that we're talking about today was purchased by Victoria Patel of DAS Patel LLC on November 2nd, 2017, for the sum of $71,000 pending today's decision. My understanding, if I'm reading the application correctly, is that if the license is not granted, DAS Patel LLC, their purchase is null and void and they spend no money except for the legal fees. It should also be noted here today that the Patel family currently owns three other convenience stores, one in Rockland, one in Duxbury, and one in Middleborough. These stores all have full liquor licenses. The building and physical property of the Main Street Market and Deli is owned in its entirety by DAS Patel LLC. However, the business operates independently as a three-way partnership and functions similar to a franchise. The business is partnered in this way: 51% ownership by DAS Patel LLC, 39% by Elaine Hood of MJH Incorporated, and 10% by Elaine's son Connor Hood. The Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, or ABCC, views a full liquor license as separate from a beer and wine license. They're handled in completely different ways by the ABCC and by law, the new license cannot be viewed by anybody as merely an extension of an existing license to sell beer and wine. So, is there a need for liquor in this location? And that's what our bylaws are about here, our zoning bylaws. So besides the Main Street Market and Deli, there are eight stores. If you would turn to page four of my handout, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I went out. If you look at that chart, there are eight stores in Hingham that currently sell beer and wine. Five of them sell hard liquor. These are the Fresh Market, Hennessy's, Queen Anne Wine and Spirits, Stop &amp; Shop, and The Wine Company in the Derby Street Shops. All of them are in business or industrial zones. The Fruit Center and Ralph's Wine Merchant, which just reopened, are in a business zone and do not sell hard liquor. The only other store in Hingham that does not sell hard liquor is the Cracker Barrel, and it is also in Residential Zone A like the Main Street Market and Deli. Therefore, we must consider the Main Street Market and Deli and the Cracker Barrel to be one and the same politically. They are both grandfathered as non-conforming general stores in Residential Zone A and have licenses to sell beer and wine. And it can be assumed by the above information that if the Main Street Market and Deli are permitted to sell hard liquor, that at any point in the future, the Cracker Barrel with any ownership, future or current, will also be permitted to follow suit. So what about neighbors who live next to the Main Street Market and Deli and the, and the Cracker Barrel who want to go out and get a bottle of vodka? Well, the distance from the Main Street Market and Deli to the nearest store selling hard liquor is Hennessy's on North Street, which is 1.8 miles away, or a five-minute drive according to Google Maps. In fact, the five stores in Hingham selling liquor, as well as Cappy's on the Hingham border in Norwell and Brady's in Weymouth Jackson Square, give a resident no fewer than seven choices in which to shop. If you live anywhere in Hingham and it isn't within five minutes to get to the nearest liquor store, it's pretty darn close and I think we can all agree on that. Thank you for your time and I would encourage all of you to vote against the Main Street Market and Deli from selling hard liquor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. If we're reaching a point where we're starting to repeat what the earlier speakers have said, I just ask you to reflect upon that.
Barbara Gorsiga, 486C Main Street. Again, I just want to reiterate, this is nothing personal. It's just that this is my home and I've lived here a long, long time. I just want to address the, a little bit about the traffic. I just want to show you some pictures, if that's all right.
Sure.
Thank you. With any change of items they have in the store, I'm concerned with traffic patterns and delivery schedules. I know they said that wouldn't change much and I respect that. And they're very good about monitoring the delivery trucks, I understand that. But they're inside the store and they can't watch the parking lots lots of times. And you can see from the pictures, there, a lot of people have parked in our right-of-way, tractor trailers, customers. Sometimes they have nowhere to park, other times they're just being, you know, parking where they want. The last picture, which isn't numbered, is of a vehicle in front of the store, which has always bothered me because it blocks visibility when we exit. And that's not just for me who, you know, we live back there. It's for customers as well. It's also people walking. My heart is always in my throat when my kids walk down there, that cars, they come in and out of the parking lot fast. You know, it's a traffic hazard and I'm just afraid, you know, if they get more inventory, it's going to add to it, loading. And I'm sure you've seen them too. And they have a loading dock, but sometimes trucks stop right in front of the store in Main Street and, you know, I have to go to work in the morning and go around these trucks and it's, it's very frightening. So I just wanted to show you some pictures. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Ray Riddle, 41 Fairview Street. You might recognize the name. Okay, in the, I don't know, 60-odd years that we've been talking about, my family had the store for a good part of the '70s and '80s. First thing I'd like to say is I want to comment on Elaine's comment where she's given back to the community. All right, I'm co-chair for First Baptist of Hingham. They have been very generous with all our raffles, our fundraisers, et cetera, on that aspect. I can always count on that store for their support. As treasurer for Mission Honduras, I have also always been able to count on their support. So they do make themselves part of the community. I'm a customer. I buy groceries, especially my wife is a health food addict. So we have no carbs. So I rely on that store for those carbs. I also buy beer. I also buy wine and I like whiskey and gin. So if you grant them the license, I will be a customer for that too. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the history and take exception to some of, some of tonight's claims. Maybe take some of the blame for some of the sins of the past that seem to be dumped on, on these people. First of all, traffic has always been a problem. You want to know when traffic was a problem the most? Back when my family had the store. All right? We would sell upwards to 187 pots of coffee a day. How many cups is that? How many customers is that? How many vehicles is that? So the traffic has always been an issue and it was a lot worse back then. I want to take and point out a very poignant comment that Connor made. You have to adapt or the business goes away. We lost two 7-Eleven stores within the past few months out of Hingham. Right? They used to be Tedeschi's, they're gone.
They didn't go out of business.
All right.
Okay. So I'm going to take point. As far as my 88-year-old father-in-law, Herbert Hirsch, can remember, it was Joyce's. Actually had another name, but everybody called it Joyce's. And it was a convenience store. And what was the draw? The draw was groceries because gas was rationed. There wasn't two to four cars in every driveway. All right? People walked to it and that was the draw. Then when it became Al Clay's, what was the draw? Okay? What was Al Clay known for? The hook on his hand, right? He was a butcher.
In real estate.
In real estate. All right? But it was the meats and that was the draw. He had a great meat counter there, special meats. You could special order the stuff and everything was cut to your throat. What happened? Our parents changed to going to packaged meats. Okay? So that wasn't as important. So when Jack got the store, how did he adapt? He added the beer and wine license. Right?
And how did he get that?
Don't know. That was before my time. I was a toddler at that. I was a toddler at that.
Keep going, Mr. Riddle.
Okay. So who gets it after Jack? Ray Riddle, my father. Okay? I know that store well. We had it through a good part of the '70s and the '80s. I managed that store. All right? I heard the 486 people complaining about the traffic, okay, and my customers parking and villainifying them, my customers. I've been through all that on that aspect. What did we do to adapt? We added the deli. We were one of the first convenience stores to have delis. That's what we did. We had the coffee on that. Back then, wine was minimal. You bought Reuniti, Lancers, Mad Dog, 2020. That's what was available back then. Some California wines, Gallo and stuff. Beer was just Coors, but I can remember when Coors Light came, Coors became available. All right, on that aspect. Well, when I went back in the military, we had too many stores. My father downsized. He sold the store to who? Alice Kirby. It became Kirby's. All right? She kept it up. She really expanded the lunch crowd and really went into that, making sandwiches and stuff like that for the workers and stuff. That's how she adapted. Then who came along? She sold it, it became The Red Rooster. Marissa, I think was her name. All right? She failed to adapt. Anybody remember what that store ended up looking like? It was an embarrassment. I happened to come back, I retired in '96 and came back, and I was just appalled. That just spiraled downward. Then a woman bought it, I forget her name off the top, I can picture her and her husband.
Jackie.
Was it Jackie? Yeah, it was Jackie.
Let's keep the...
Okay, so Jackie bought it, and she really cleaned the store up, she brought the groceries, okay? She tried, you know, I gave her some pointers and stuff, she brought that store up. And then Jay comes along, Jay and Victoria. All right? What did they do to innovate? All right? Yes, they're the ones that brought in the ice cream. All right? They're the ones that really took the wine section and changed it from just California blends to really becoming a place where you could go and get a lesson in wine and get a good bottle. All right? Then they turned and merged, sold to Elaine and Connor. And what did they do? Well, I know what Connor and Andrew did. They really expanded the craft beer selection. That was their goal. And now here, they're trying to adapt some more by bringing some liquor into it. So I am totally for them. I have total confidence that these two young men, along with Elaine and Victoria, will really give us a store that we're proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Cushing, and I have lived at 497 Main Street since 1962. And I have seen that store in every iteration, starting with Mr. Clay. And I echo what Mr. Riddle had to say. Each owner has adapted and expanded and made it a better place. And what I can say about Connor and Andrew is that they are members of the community. They care about their neighbors. They cater to their needs. If you need something, they'll make it happen. It's had beer and wine there for quite a long time, and that has not changed the tone or tenor of the neighborhood. And I cannot see how adding this additional license is going to change that going forward. They are trying to adapt, you know, and make a small business run in a big-box world, and that's not easy. And so I think they're really trying to make a go of it and be a part of the community. The traffic has been a nightmare for as long as I've been on Main Street, and I don't think those things are going to change. But I think they're doing the best with what they have, and I fully support what they're doing, and I wish them the best of luck.
Thank you, Ms. Cushing. Yes, sir.
My name's Mark Murphy, 480 Main Street, different end of the spectrum from everyone else. I just bought the house in December. I'm the direct of butter to the general store, Connor. Hell of a thing to sit through today. You guys are doing a good job. I know it's tough. You've got all your customers here, one way or another. It's just a bad situation, right? No matter, win or lose. I have different concerns and questions, and a lot of it revolves around you guys. I have some questions for you, because I think there's fair points on either side. You know, it's not a commercial location. It's, you know, there's a lot of things going on. I abut it personally, and I don't want to go down the storylines, but, you know, I bought it for a general store to be next to me. I have two young kids, they love going over and getting food, they love Connor, they love Andrew. Do I love the idea of having, you know, liquor cabinets to the ceiling, to your point, or metal shelves, or would I love a Cracker Barrel? That's almost irrelevant to what they're doing, because it's their business. I want a Cracker Barrel next to it. I want a general store. I don't want a liquor store. You know, these guys put their life savings into this work, and I have my life savings into my house. Right? It's the same concept. It's tough. It's a difficult conversation. But I think one of the things that I want to, you know, one way or another, you guys are going to make a decision tonight, is that decision final? So I think that one of the bigger points I'm concerned with is I think Connor and Andrew have like the best of intentions. Their intention is to offer, you know, a little bit more liquor and wine, liquor for everybody else, right? I don't think they want to be Cappies. But to a fair amount of points here, which I didn't know coming in, everyone did a lot of research, and I really appreciate that research. This changes hands a lot, and young guys, I would expect them to, you know, if they get the liquor license, value goes up, roughly $70,000. You know, you do well, hopefully, you know, make some money, like that's the American way. Do we get to come back here if you guys approve this, and that license changes hands and they sell that store? Or is this perpetuity?
All of the liquor licenses that we issue are subject to renewal. And if there are violations, you know, I'm not sure what the exact statutory framework is, but that would be subject to examination by the board as well to see whether or not they should continue to being licensed.
Because I think it would have to be a change of manager, maybe? Right? Because the location, this is a grant of the liquor license at that location, but it's a grant at a location to a particular party. And I would think that if they sell it...
May I offer some insight to that point?
Sure.
Just very briefly.
Thank you.
There are many opportunities. For instance, what, I'm sorry, Ms. Johnson mentioned, if there's a change in manager, not manager, the store manager, the record manager...
The license.
...that becomes a public hearing. If there is a, if they sell the business and the license does get transferred or is sought to be transferred, that becomes a public hearing.
Okay. The other lawyer, if you want. Can I ask the other lawyer?
No, you can just address whatever questions you have.
Okay, so for right now, we don't know, really. If it changes hands to another manager, it will be reviewed again? Is that right? The same location?
Yes.
And will be alerted?
You'll get the same kind of notice.
Four days?
The same kind of notice?
It's supposed to be 10 by law.
Okay, so...
Any other questions, sir?
Yes. Is there any way, and I think, I'm just trying to help out here and try to solve the problem?
This was a five-minute hearing that's now hour and 10 minutes in, so...
I appreciate that you would respect the fact that I've spent, you know, my entire life savings, and I want five minutes. Okay, so the question I have is, can we restrict the deed to never be a liquor store and to only be what they want it to be? I'm just asking that their business plan, we be promised that business plan?
We're called upon to either approve or deny an application for this license, and that's what we're doing. We're not getting into deeds or deed restrictions or anything of that nature.
Okay.
It's just not within our authority. Like, this is a process, right? It comes to us...
Way out of our ballpark doing that.
Okay. Okay, so it's yea-nay. Got it. All right, so because, you know, I have small children and stuff, I don't want a liquor store, I don't not believe in what these guys are doing, and I think they're probably going to do it right. The next owner, if you know that next owner's name and his intentions, I'm okay with it, but I don't, so I can't do it, because this is my house for a long time.
Are you in the Henningson house?
O'Briens.
O'Briens. The, I don't know who won the...
The new fence?
Yeah. I just did that myself. I haven't painted it yet, it will be white.
Good job.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
How you doing? I'm Matt Kalish. I live at 461 Main, across the street and diagonal a little bit from the Red Store. And my main concern, I believe, is I just feel like if we're going to, you know, impact the business expansion that they're planning, it should be, you know, rational. There should be like a really rational basis for doing that. And when you look at where they're located, they're in the dead center of Hingham, like as center of Hingham as you can be. Hingham is really wealthy. Hingham, the average income in Hingham is $200,000 per year. That's the people that go to the Red Store. The concern around, you know, who's going to show up at the store at night if they add liquor? I mean, it's going to be people buying premium spirits. You're going to see investment bankers. Like, who do you think is going to go to the store? Think people from Quincy, like gang members are going to come to the store? No. Like, come on, let's be realistic. There's a million, million liquor stores surrounding Hingham. The people who go to this store are going to be people in this room. That's who's going to go. Their current customers, who they will now have a little more success monetizing, maybe be able to stay in business. Like, I know these guys really well. They've always been good to me, good to my kids. I went out with Andrew and Connor. I talked to them about their business a little bit, like a couple weeks ago after somebody came to my house about this. And I asked them, like, how are you doing? They're like, we really don't know. Like, it kind of all goes together. They've invested everything in this expansion. They're not doing that well, I promise you. Like, this is something that it's make or break, I think, for the store. And I don't think that's really inconsistent with what you see with a lot of business models. Like, for example, if you're on a cruise, like, how do cruises make money? Half their money comes from the casino. Like, there would not be a cruise without the casino on the cruise ship. It wouldn't exist. Like, you have to understand that sometimes to have the Red Store exist at all, you have to accept, like, these guys have to be able to make it, they have to be able to exist. I think if we're going to throw marbles in their way, like, we should be really sensitive to like how realistic or how, you know, how credible some of these concerns really are, you know? And the last thing I'll say is, you know, people who moved into houses that share the driveway with them, like, you know, when you move in, that's your decision. Like, you make that decision. And as a part of that, you know, you can't then, you know, make every business call for the Red Store. Like, you know the situation you're moving into, and being able to micromanage every decision that they make to try to increase their success is also not realistic, in my view. It's certainly not my position that I should have a right to decide how they expand their business and stay afloat. So, anyway.
Thank you very much. All right. I think we, all right. I've got two, I'm not going to rehash any. I'm sorry, sir, there's people who still want to talk. Lady in the back, and then going to close with the chief.
Hi. I'm Elizabeth Sarabia. I'm at 486B Main Street.
Good evening.
Like the Gorsigas, share a property line with 480 Main, and because of the zoning law, I'm an interested party, I am within 300 feet. In fact, it's about 30 to 40 yards, that property line for my...
Okay.
So when I chose that house, the realtor assured me that it was a residential area and that this was a country market-type store. And so I don't want my property value of that house, if I ever went to sell it, to be adversely affected by it being a full liquor store. And I am concerned that if it's exclusively, if it turns into an exclusively adult-serving, servicing liquor store, the property values will suffer. And I have a minor child who, every time their child or the friends come, leave the house or come to my house, they all have to walk through that property. That's my only way in and out. So I, I just, I'm against this going through because of all the unknown factors and the ones that we have that we do know.
Thank you, ma'am. Chief?
Glenn Olson, Hingham Police Chief, resident of Hingham, even though I feel like I live here most of the time.
Know the feeling.
Yeah. This is an interesting subject when I first heard it. My initial reaction to this was, oh my God, they're going to put a liquor store in to the Main Street Deli. And then I thought about it, I thought about the logistics, I thought about the traffic, and I started sitting down. And one of the jobs that I have is not to make judgment on whether something is good or bad, but to tell you what I feel in my experience, training, and working with the different boards, how it will affect the town of Hingham. And my first issue came down to the traffic issue. I thought, you know, will their addition of alcohol over beer and wine, will that draw more customers to the store than we're normally getting? I actually consulted a couple people in the field, historically in planning boards, and when we're doing business applications throughout the town, there's experts in the field that look up different types of stores and what traffic they'll draw. And statistically, over the years, they're pretty, you know, they've really developed this. And his, I can't say statisti, you know, he looked at it, I asked him the question, explained to him the location, the existing parking there. And the result was that they sort of felt, two of the people sort of felt that there'd be a minor increase in traffic, customers to the store. And in the back of my own mind, I was thinking probably the same thing. I just don't see people going to their location for the purpose of buying, solely buying alcohol. It's going to be a convenience thing, they live there, they drive by, they're pre-existing customers. So the stories, historically, the issues that we've always had at the store relate to traffic and parking. They've always been very cooperative over the years. Ray, you actually brought up a lot of the different changes. I remember when cars used to park on both sides of the street. We installed different barricades along the side of Main Street to prevent them from crossing over the street. We've worked very diligently with the owners over the years to manage the delivery vehicles. I drive by there this morning, well, the past couple of weeks. My main problem right now is the people building a house next to it that have four pickup trucks parked on Main Street. I don't know if that's any worse than what you're going to get, but I haven't got any complaints about that yet, so I keep my mouth shut. I don't want to get my men mad at me for calling in things that I shouldn't call in, and I continue.
Know the feeling.
They're out of the street, they're, you know. As a former police officer, you'll probably appreciate that, right?
Yes, I do.
So I think it's just one of those things, they've always been cooperative. I think it will have a minor impact. I think that we can continue to work with them. I did pull traffic data for the last five years. It showed that there were numerous accidents in the area, but none of them actually related to vehicles coming in and out of the Main Street Deli. Most of them were rear-end accidents from traffic being stopped on Main Street. So my overall impression is that there will be a slight increase in the business traffic there, and I think it's manageable under those conditions, and if we continue to work with them, that would be my opinion on this right at the moment. There's never really been any issues with any of the owners. They've always been very cooperative with us, and they've really, I think they realize their role, and they know that in order for their business to exist, they have to cooperate with the parking issues that are out there.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, I'm going to hold, sir.
I have a couple of important things to say.
You may well, but you got your airtime, and we're way over our allotted time for this hearing. Everybody in the room that has wanted to speak has had that opportunity, so now we're going to... Okay.
Okay.
So, here we are.
So you want me to go first?
Well, you know, I'll give a little perspective, too. I looked at the petition that the Main Street Market applicant submitted, and I see a lot of names with addresses all around this store in support of what's going on here. You know, I'm familiar with the Village. There's people from the Village who have signed on to this as well. I happen to know Ms. Cushing's mother and father quite well as a young boy, and I've known her for many years. And I thought that her reflections, based on having lived in this area over 50 years, were very thoughtful and measured. I worked at Charlie Cushions, which is a gas station that used to be up in the center. And located strategically, right next to that gas station was a full-service liquor store, which is now Atlantic Bagel. And that full-service liquor store didn't generate nearly the kind of amount of traffic And that full-service liquor store didn't generate nearly the kind of amount of traffic that Atlantic Bagel does. I'm looking at stores, Tedeschi's, 7-Eleven, closing. We got a little guy here. That's how I see it. You know, Cracker Barrel, these guys, they're kinda like the last of the Mohicans. And, you know, I'm sorry, but I don't patronize your store, but having said that, there are people that spoke up for you tonight that do. And it's not like you're selling pop-off out of that place, or that, I don't suspect that's your plan. You know, Ms. Millie, I respect the fact that you're against this. I saw that you were against it in 1973 as well, so your position is consistent. And for that, I thank you. I listened to you, Mr. Mayo, and I factored in your, your letter, and I read the case that you cited to. I conferred with town council on this. I think I have an idea of where things are going. I've been on that street, I've been on Main Street over half a century myself. I go through this area every day, twice, minimum. And I know it's a bottleneck. It's a configuration of the roadway, in part anyways. It's very thickly settled. I understand that. I'm careful. You know, I, we, we talked to the, the second floor to get their input on this. We looked at an opinion from council, which is in the file on this particular site, reflects the view that, you know, the beer and wine was okay at the time, retail is retail. You're saying it's an expansion. That's why I devoted the kind of time I did to the percentage increases here. I've seen the trucks in the side parking lot. I understand that that, that can be extremely irritating for the people that live behind there. You know, I'd be, I think that that is something that we need to speak to. But those are my, at least preliminary thoughts. I'd be interested to hear what my colleague has to say.
Yeah, so, you know, you spent a lot of time on it. I think Mary spent a lot of time on it. I also spent a lot of time on it because of just the, just the remarks that you made, sir, about the equities involved here. They're not insignificant equities, right? There are property values in the abutting properties and, and the greater Main Street properties, but there's all, there are also the equities of the business owner that, that need to be weighed, I think, very carefully in making a determination on the grant of the spirits license. Because the spirits license is, you know, is an adaptation, I guess, of, of the business plan for that location. So, you know, I, I appreciate all the time that you all have taken, and I want you to understand that the three of us, including Tom, have also taken a great deal of time in, in assessing the facts, in assessing the practices in Hingham, in assessing the law. So, you know, I, I have to say, the chief and I don't always agree on everything, but my reaction was the same as the chief's initially, was like, you know, oh, my God, hard alcohol at the Main Street Market and Deli. And then, you know, you really have to back up from that and analyze, I think, what the law is and what the, what the introduction of an additional product line, alcohol product line, to a store that already sells beer and wine, what does that mean? Like, that's the delta, I think, that you have to focus on, or I had to focus on. I did talk to the police chief in detail about traffic and operator history, frankly, because those were two things that I think were, are significant to the, that location and also to the grant to a particular manager. You know, the, the traffic, I, these, these pictures are, are concerning, but I think the question I have to ask myself is, do these pictures change, materially change, with the addition of a spirits license, you know? Or are these trucks and this delivery traffic essentially gonna be constant throughout the operation of this business? I, I think what we're, what we're all experiencing now is the existence of a non-conforming use in a residential district with increased, I think, traffic in that location, as Paul said, anyway. And with, to, to Ms. Millie's remark, with the increased size of delivery trucks, right? So, these, these trucks are not just stopping at the Red Store, right? They're loaded up to stop, you know, all up and down the South Shore. So, the problem is, we've got a non-conforming use in a residential district that, that creates that traffic. But that's there. So, that's not going away. These pictures aren't going away. And so, for me, we gotta deal, you know what? I'm in the middle of my, I'm on a roll. To me, we need to deal with the traffic issues, for sure. That's something we need to deal with, with the police department. But my question in this, then, is, again, the addition of, an additional business line, I guess I would phrase it as, the addition of spirits, does that materially change this traffic pattern? And from, from Connor's response to Mr. Healy's several questions on this point, you know, the answer for me is no. It, it doesn't and it won't. You're gonna have delivery trucks that are showing up there that, for liquor distributors who distribute beer already, now will distribute spirits potentially to you. So, that was that. I talked to the ABCC. You know, I did review the case laws, Mr. Healy did. I had a discussion with our council, and I also had a discussion with our zoning administrator. And, you know, the, the question for me gets distilled down to, does the addition of spirits change the use of that location? Or is it within the protection that's already granted to an existing non-conforming use in a residential area, right? And, you know, I, I was having a hard time, I was having a hard time coming to the conclusion that there was gonna be a material change to this operation by the addition, by the addition of spirits. I just, I feel like what's gonna happen is that the person that's swinging in there to get bread and milk and beer may now pick up a bottle of vodka, or may pick up a bottle of tequila because they're gonna make, you know, margaritas at home. That it's not a high-volume alcohol purchase in any event, right? It's not a high-volume alcohol purchase for beer or wine currently. You, you run in, you get your stuff, and you leave. You know, if people are sitting in their car drinking and have an open container currently, that's an issue, right? That's a police issue. That issue exists currently. So, again, I was just really having trouble coming to the conclusion that the addition of hard alcohol really changes what's going on at that store. So, that's what I was on it.
The main point here, though, is, is that the zoning, okay, if I go and put a petition on to my house.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
No, you can't.
Excuse me, madam. You wanna talk, go to the podium. Identify yourself by name and address. We'll give you the opportunity to speak. That way, the other people at home can hear what you have to say as well. If you don't do that, people at home don't hear you.
There's just really one important point. I'm Gail Corney. I abut the store, and.
Can you go by name?
Obviously, you've already made your choice, so.
Can you go, identify yourself by name and address, please?
I said 486 Main Street. I abut the store, and.
And what is your name, ma'am?
The main, Gail Corney. And the main, the main point here is that if I go to build onto my house, I have to come up and bring my, my house up to code and adhere to the zoning laws, the current zoning laws. Why, when this place changes hands every time it changes hands, isn't it brought to the same current zoning standards that you guys installed in 1930?
So, that's your, that's, that's, no, that's the exact, you, you've asked the exact question. The exact question is, this is an existing non-conforming use. So long as it stays within the non-conforming use that it has currently, it doesn't have to be brought up to code. If it, if it goes outside the use, the current use.
But we are changing the use.
You know what? You know what?
Sorry.
I, okay. I really, really would appreciate it if you don't interrupt me, okay?
Okay.
If it goes outside that current use, it's no longer sanctioned. You, you've gotta, you, in order to be in that district now, you have to be a residence. The only reason the Red Store can be there now is because it's a pre-existing non-conforming use. It has to stay within the sphere of that existing non-conforming use, otherwise, they'd have to get a variance, right?
I think we have consensus that what they're proposing is within that. At least, I, I realize that, I, I'm, we're not gonna entertain.
I have new information here.
Sir, sir.
I've applied this significantly. Okay, I have the 1973 March 30th original granting of beer and wine license, and it says here.
We have that information.
It says here that it was agreed by the selectmen that there should be no sign on the store of any alcohol at all.
Sir, we're, we're.
And it's a direct violation.
Excuse me.
But if you violate, you make laws, you gotta keep them.
These are, these are.
I, I haven't.
Violations of current zoning bylaws right now that have not been enforced by this town.
All right, sir. We're not talking about the sign at this point in time. We're talking about whether or not to issue the license.
So, so, let, let's just, let me, let me just spend a minute on the 1973 decision. The 1973 decision by this board to grant a beer and wine license to the Red Store, for lack of a better term for the store, said that there would be no exterior advertising of beer and wine. So, now we get into some semantics about whether listing beer and wine on the main sign for the store constitutes exterior advertising. When I look at the, the 1973 decision, that, to me, that means no neon corse, Corona sign in the window. It doesn't mean that you can't have on your sign that you sell beer and wine in a generic capacity. So, I don't, other people could differ. That's a building inspector issue, as far as I'm concerned, but I, I'd just like to put that to rest, 'cause I, in my mind, that's not, if I'd been sitting on the board in 1973, that's not what I would've meant by that, okay? So, you know, I, I feel like you guys are being a little dismissive of us. This isn't an easy decision, and we've done our research. Reasonable minds differ on this. I, I think that we came at it in a rational, fact-based way. You know, there are parameters that we have to march through, and we marched through them. That's not to say that you all can't come to a different conclusion here, but we took very seriously our obligation to you all as property owners in that area and, frankly, as citizens of the town. I mean, I, I think you're right. That it's, this board has been pretty tough on the grant of one-day liquor licenses. Like, we, we take this alcohol authority very, very seriously. So, you know, I, I know, I knew, right, coming into this, that not everyone's gonna be happy, but I feel like we did the job we needed to do to try to come to a decision based on the parameters that we felt governed the process.
Mr. Mayo.
Larry Mayo.
I'm, I'm giving you the podium.
Right, I missed it.
But we're way over, so.
Eighty, eighty-seven Free Street, Larry Mayo.
Thank you.
I guess, just two points. Number one is, you know, we're not necessarily, my chief concern isn't necessarily licensing any particular individual. What you're doing here would be, if you were to so vote.
I understand. I know what I'm doing, yeah.
To sanction the location.
Yep, I know what I'm doing.
In and of itself is an appropriate venue. There's never an opportunity to turn that clock back. You know, the next liquor store owner, you know, if there's a potential sale, would come through, and you may or may not like them, but the location will still have been deemed an appropriate location. You can never turn that back. The idea behind zoning, in and of itself, is to ultimately phase out these non-conforming uses. So, it's, it's really a, I think, to fall in favor of the grant of a license would be really a drastic step, at least without a formal opinion of the zoning board of appeal.
Anybody else? All right. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I would just like to confirm what Ms. Johnson has said. We all put a lot of work into this, and no matter where you fall down on this issue, this was not a decision easily reached. And, you know, we, we've been talking to lawyers, the police chief, and heard from the neighbors. I've, I've read all the material that's been submitted. Mr. Mayo, I thank you for your very thoughtful letter because it, it, it gave us a lot to chew on. I'll just word it like that. However, I entertain a motion to approve the request for the change of location of a package store, all alcoholic beverages licensed from RMP LLC DBA Douglas Wine and Spirits to 11 Lincoln Street to MJH Inc., DBA Main Street Market and Deli 484 Main Street, Hingham, contingent upon the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Commission.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, that was fun.
Thank you. We were just sweet, Adam. We're my, we're my, you know. I'm gonna do my office, words on me.
Can I?
Yeah. You give me a fashion, might not find my driveway.
Yeah.
Drive slow. You, too.
I know this is difficult, and I could tell by the looks of your faces.
Well, it's not an easy location, and it is a law for the neighbors to do it.
You know, I have.
Need a parking plan, Dan.
I know. It's really hard. It's so small.
Yeah.
It's not an easy thing, but thank you so much for all your.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for being here. Thank you.
Okay. Next madam on the, uh, next madam. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the request of Verizon New England to relocate one J O pole P six on the westerly side of Downing Street to a point approximately four feet northerly from its current location, said point being approximately 151 feet southerly from pole P four located on Downing Street. Yes, sir, if you could identify yourself by name and address for the record.
My name's Barry, Barry Mafini. I work for a company called UC Synergetic, who represents Verizon and right-of-way issues. This petition has, is basically, as it's stated, it's relocating a pole to get out of the way of a new driveway.
To get out of the way of what?
A new, a new driveway that's being installed.
Okay. And the light company has signed off on all of this?
Yes.
As, has the highway?
Uh, that I can't answer, sir.
BPW, BPW signed off on this, Tom?
Yes, they did.
All right.
Harry would've been here, but I missed it when he was here.
All right. Any questions, council?
No.
I entertain a motion to approve the request, and I apologize for keeping you this long, sir, I do.
Very educational.
I, I realize your, your matter was far less.
Controversial.
Yes. I entertain a motion to approve the request of Verizon New England Inc. to relocate one J O pole P six on the westerly side of Downing Street to a point approximately four feet northerly from its current location, said point being approximately 151 feet southerly from pole P four located on Downing Street. This pole relocation is necessary to accommodate a new driveway. This approval is subject to the stipulation of the Department of Public Works, as outlined in the letter dated April 30th, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Ocean Kai. What do we got, Tom?
Change in manager, I believe.
Okay. Connie Toccio is... She's becoming the manager, or?
She is, sir. No idea.
Oh.
How are you?
Miss Toccio, how are you?
The last name's messed you up.
Are you Claude's wife? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Just have to mix in the.
I think I'm actually pretty good on this one.
Change of manager.
You, you've worked on there, haven't you?
That's my family's.
Yeah, okay. Well, I have to say, I think you're one of the longest surviving restaurants in the town of Hingham.
Forty-seven years, April.
Yeah, that's impressive. Now that the aloha's gone, you're the last.
Change of manager.
You, you've worked on there, haven't you?
That's my family's.
Yeah, okay. Well, I have to say, I think you're one of the longest surviving restaurants in the town of Hingham.
Forty-seven years, April.
Yeah, that's impressive. Now that the aloha's gone, you're the last man standing.
That was how many years ago?
Yeah, I know. Whoops.
So, what, what's prompting the change in manager?
Just that I'm the current manager, and that was my uncle that was passed, and he's not part of the business anymore.
Okay, okay.
So, it was just time to update it all.
Yep. And what's been your experience at the restaurant in terms of, you know, enforcing the liquor laws?
I've been the manager for the last 15 years.
Okay.
So, just improving and changing and keeping up to date with everything.
Okay. And verification of, of age is, is what?
Forty-seven.
What's your policy on that? How do you, if I, if I came in for a drink, you can ask me for my ID.
Your ID, and then it's Massachusetts only. We have a scanner.
You have a scanner?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Okay, I think I'm...
I got carded at Stop and Shop.
It's, it's like a proud day.
What?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I just, I go in there just for that.
Feel him down.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request of Ocean Kai, Inc., DBA Ocean Kai, for a change of manager from David Chin to Connie Wong Totchio, contingent upon the approval of Alcohol, the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Say hi to both of them.
Thanks, Connie. Thanks for coming in.
All right. Got some appointments here. Yes. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint the following four detectives as agents of the Board of Selectmen to enforce the laws of the Liquor Control Act and the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission, ABCC, regulations for all licensed liquor establishments in the town of Hingham for a term ending April 30th, 2019. Detective Sergeant Ryan O'Shea, Detective Daniel Larry, Detective John Markwart, and Detective Philip Tracy.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye. Sort of sensing a theme with the evening.
I'll entertain a motion to sign the employment agreement with Police Chief Glenn Olson.
Second.
All's in favor?
You going to wait, wait on this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, and what else we got?
We're going to wait on this one, right? Wasn't Carrie supposed to be...
Nope, we can, we can, we can do that one.
But Mary's not here.
Oh, Mary's not here. We're waiting on that anyways.
Mary's not here.
I prefer to wait for Mary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we've got everything, so...
Farmers Market, no, was it?
Farmers, we, we've been, that one's not ready either.
Okay.
Playground's not ready.
Some of this stuff isn't ready for prime time, so...
Okay.
It's off. Okay, Tom, anything happy you want to say before we...
Let everyone know, the board asked me to reach out and, and do some research on governance options for the potential acquisition of the water company. I wanted to let everyone know that I'm making progress on that. We, I had a, I was at the public meeting of the HMLP board two mornings ago, and we had a conversation. I asked them of their interest in, in that endeavor, if that were to come to fruition. I asked them to think about that. I asked them to think about their, their capacity to, to do work in that world, and they agreed that they would do that. So, we're making progress. We are, I'm, I'm investigating options. We're digging in. I believe Ms. Johnson may, may assist down the road.
I volunteered.
Yeah, that's right. As the workload increases, many bodies are certainly appreciated. So, just wanted to give that brief update.
I'm good.
Ladies and gentlemen, democracy in action tonight. Difficult hearing, strongly held views on both sides. I hope, as an observer of the meeting, you felt that everyone got a chance to speak, voice their views. I just want to thank the participants of the Battle of Grape Island that occurred this past Sunday down at the bandstand. That was a kind of a multi-group effort to reflect upon and recognize a battle that took place here at the early stages of the Revolutionary War. We had the robust participation of the Veterans Council, Janine Sucheki working closely with Andrea Young, the Historic, Historical Commission, Senior Chief German, our board. Had a great, great time, and I strongly urge you to consider attending that when it occurs again next year. The road diet is in play, if you will. We've got a website up that you can access to voice your, your observations, complaints, comments, suggestions. And I'm referring to that stretch of Summer Street between the Rotary leading down into Muzzy's Corner. I've actually gone through it during peak traffic times. I want to thank the Department of Public Works for this, Planning Board, 3A Task Force, obviously, the police. Thank you very much, chief, for all your help. Now, this, 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 again, is a group effort, and this is something that, you know, we're, we're confident and hopeful will be successful so that we can go to the next step in the addressing that corridor to make it safer for people passing through. And finally, Memorial Day is coming up, and that's this Monday. You know, it's a holiday, but it's also a time to reflect. And I'd ask the residents of this town to consider attending the ceremony that we hold in the center, in the Matthew Hawk Square. You know, this is a, a time when we can all gather and just, just give thanks for the, the ultimate sacrifice that was paid by some of us, for all of us. It's, I've always enjoyed attending this, so...
No, and I'd echo that. And I, I, I think that our Veteran Service Officer is able to enlist just really, really wonderful speakers to that event. It really is a, it is a way to frame not only that day, but I think you walk away from there with, with mindfulness that I, I think we all need from time to time. One other announcement I forgot to make was the Massachusetts Council on Aging gave a lifetime achievement award to our own Barbara Farnsworth. I just have to say that in the short time I've had an opportunity to work with Barbara, she is fully invested in providing and evolving elder services here in the town of Hingham. And I think she's a great example of the kind of commitment that we have from our dedicated staff here in Town Hall. And, you know, I, I'd just really like to thank Barbara for her effort, you know, on behalf of the elders of this town, but also in developing a department that will continue to, I think, provide high-quality service. You know, she's not only focused on today, but she's focused on tomorrow. And I, I think it's tremendous, so congratulations, Barbara.
Yes, indeed. Here, here. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And I'd like to second a motion to adjourn.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.